Okay. Sorry, Karen. All right. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is 7:05. Uh, where are your stuff?
Anthony Amato.
I'm here.
Alan Brown.
Here.
John Boniuto. Gregory Keva.
Here.
Mike, Michelle Gora.
Here.
James Hirschfield. Stephanie Kolnick, here. Jen Pody. Lisa Rousch. Michael Sinatra.
Here.
Julie Stewart. Peter Tagley. I think we've got quorum.
We have attended, we have a quorum. Great. All right. Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from September 11th. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Greg?
I tried all week to look at these minutes and they didn't come out. I could not get past the first page. And it's some issue related to access to our system remotely, to Google Docs. I'd like to ask that those minutes go off for the next meeting because I couldn't review them and I want to review them because there are critical things on and I need to make sure are correct. Personally, I would prefer to have a PDF of everything. I've never been a fan of these Google Doc things and sometimes they don't work and you can't access them from remote locations, from outside of this building or outside of the central office.
I think they, not to get into a technical discussion, but I believe they are PDFs. Or at least the way I see them, they're PDFs, Greg. But you have to open them on a proprietary system. It's a Google system. I know the educators love Google. I personally don't. And I don't know where a kid's going to get a job knowing how to run Google but not knowing how to run the other things. And frankly, I would just as soon lose these and have them sent by the normal method. But unfortunately, this is what it is and I couldn't review it. I tried six times to get into the document and I could not get past the first page. Couldn't down. So you'd like to table the minutes for the next meeting?
I'd like to pass them and have them come back at the next meeting. I'd like to remove them from the consent agenda for this meeting.
Any questions? Fine. We'll push them off to the, to the next meeting. Thank you. Item D, reports in recognition. Something I wanted to point out, I think it was the last board meeting or so, we had an opportunity, I had an opportunity with a few of the board members to visit Burnham and had a chance to see the new classroom configurations. I was personally impressed with the work, not only done by Don and his crew, but also the way the program was laid out. It looked like a fun place to be. In fact, we were thinking, we'll have a board meeting in a not-too-distant future, probably at Burnham as well as at Booth. And I thought it would be kind of fun to sit in the classroom where the kids are on those bouncy balls. But it looked like a great place to be and a great learning environment and I know my colleagues share a lot of the same comments. So I wanted to share that with the board, so, well done. Pat?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I have a, just a short agenda here. We have an appointment of Megan Purcell as an education assistant at Booth Free. We have a field trip for eighth grade in October, which is aligned with their curriculum in social studies. And I think that's it right now. Everything's going well in the schools. The administration's here. I want to thank them for a great beginning of the school year, doing a wonderful job, and things are good. So, we'll leave it at that.
Always. And I felt earlier, I was supposed to remind everybody to please use your microphones. I guess there was issues with voices being picked up on tape, so we'll remind you again. Thank you. So with that, I think Todd, you're up.
Good evening, board members. You received the scanned document earlier, the end of last week, but I provided you a paper copy as well for your review. This is the class of 2017, board report. In this, I review the highlights of the class, talk about their accomplishments, look at all the exciting things that they did. For those of you that attended the graduation this past year, it was a testament to the speeches especially, but the accolades and all the accomplishments of the class of 2017 was a testament to their hard work, their dedication, and just how special that class was. For those of you that heard the speeches, you know, they were inspiring, well-thought, and moving. They really brought us to places beyond our graduation stage and the campus, to the larger world, to the impact that our graduates will have on their students and on their futures. So it was really exciting. This class was truly prepared by their experience at Chapag for their next steps through a combination of soft skills, college and career success skills. It was evident that they were ready to go on to the next step after Chapag. Return to the first page. I'm just going to look at the class profile. This is one of the smallest classes that we've had in recent years. You'll see at the top, 49 students graduated from Chapag. Of those, 36 chose to go on to a four-year institution. Three declared they would be attending a two-year institution. Three went into career training programs. One entered the military and six started work right after high school. The overall acceptance to post-secondary programs was 88 percent. That includes the two- and four-year acceptances. The career training programs is interesting to us because we haven't seen as many of those, although that's been a focus of our work the last few years. Our goal is to have each graduate leave with a plan, whether it be employed, whether it be a training institution, whether it be a two-year institution or a four-year institution. We really want them leaving Chapag with a purposeful plan. Those students went on to Lincoln Tech for automotive and the Fire Science Academy in Connecticut, which is a training facility to help students become, or get jobs in firefighting. Down below, you can see there is a sampling of the intended majors. So this is what they declared as they left us in the spring, as we know, many times that changes throughout their college careers. Thought it was interesting, we had a few students looking at criminal justice forensics. UNH was a hot school last year for many of our students for their excellent program in criminal justice. Cybersecurity was an interesting one and it's definitely an up-and-coming field, you know, especially with the most recent news we've had of all the breaches and the data issues. That one is going to be a hot topic. Sacred Heart has one of the premier programs in cybersecurity in our area. International relations, meteorology, philosophy, and psychology. So all exciting careers there. Of our acceptances, this is the second year in a row that we had a student receive the West Point civilian scholarship. And he was, he'll be attending Marion Academy for the prep year in preparation, as long as that goes successfully, to enter West Point the following year. And that's a really big deal for us. That's our second year in a row that that's happened. And that came from this class. On the right, you can see the community service areas, some of the highlights, whether it be libraries in our three towns or here at our school, camp counselors, the Washington Environmental, Bridgewater Parade, or the Roxbury Parade, the Bridgewater Town Fair, the fire departments, Alliance Club. Our students were very involved in their community, answering their call to citizenship. This class was once again recognized by the generous donation of our residents through scholarship, earning over $100,000 in scholarship to continue on with their post-secondary education. Turn to the next page. We've highlighted some of the building blocks for a Chapag graduate through academics, through their senior project, answering call to citizenship, extracurriculars. I'm just going to pull a couple of these highlights out. This class was superior academically, very driven, very focused. The level of their rigor, their level of their dedication to their classes was evident with their college acceptances, which we'll get to later. But one of the areas that was, I really wanted to highlight, was their involvement with the AP program. Out of the 49 students, 33 of them, or 67 percent, took an AP course their senior year. Just want that to sink in for a minute because that's a big deal. Of those 33 students, 11, or 22 percent of them, were recognized as AP scholars, which is also a huge deal. And you can see at the bottom of the page there, where I've broken out the level of the AP scholar's recognition. Very impressive. Terms of answering a call to citizenship, this class logged more than 3,500 hours in service to their local community and community abroad. At graduation, the last few years, we have recognized that person that has logged the most community service hours. This past year's recipient was Bianca Getzel. She logged over 700 hours, serving in her local library, helping out in her community, really showing a sincere dedication to literacy. I've included examples of senior projects on the next page. Senior project is one of our, you know, capstone events. It is, we are a lighthouse school for senior project. None of the other schools that I have worked at had, we'd done senior project in any way, shape, or form, the way that Chapag does it. I'm really proud of the work that our kids did and especially of these seniors. And I've given you some highlight events there. I thought it was interesting today, and I think you all were shared on the email about Luke Chaney and, you know, the service dog and the apparatus that he donated that saved that dog's life this past weekend. So really, it was real-life events, real-life purpose, and, you know, those connections that go above and beyond the classroom in many ways, where kids can find an area to study and, you know, take it throughout the year. And for some of them, you know, it creates a lifelong experience. Many of our graduates, that senior project has been a part of their life's work as they've gone on to be alumni. On the last page, or last two pages, you have a breakdown of the acceptances, so the different schools that our students were accepted to. This is done through the rating system of U.S. News and World Report. It's broken down into the most selective, the more selective, the selective, the less selective, and then the unrated or non-competitive or special category schools. And you can see that this small but mighty class earned great acceptances across the board. Many of them had purposeful decisions in their applications and so they chose schools that they know would meet their needs in the special or unrated areas that had majors that were specific to what they were looking for. I'm impressed with the diversity of the acceptances, the range of the acceptances, and the geographic placement. You know, so it wasn't just our local New England schools, but quite a few. You look at University of Montana, University of Alaska, you know, so all over the country. Our students are spreading their nets and looking to see what is the best fit. I really do attribute that this list goes back to their purpose throughout high school, their focus, their concentration, and they are up among the best of the best and showing their stuff. So we're really proud. So I just wanted to say thank you for all of your support with this class and the classes to come. You should be very proud of what they did.
I have a question because you've been here before us many times. From your perspective, does the size of the people, the size of the class that we're educating, does, from my perspective, does that have a more positive or a less positive effect on results? Should a school like us be selling small rather than large?
Let me clarify your question. So you're saying as our class is small, like this class of 49?
Right.
Is that more, or does that help those students in the college admission process?
Well, not only that, but the results and how they turn out as students. Having a smaller environment of students.
I got you. Yes.
Rather than a larger, maybe more diversified, sometimes more diversified could be better, could not be better. My thinking is the private school sector sells small.
Yes.
They don't sell large.
Yep.
And we have a very private school environment.
We do.
From my perspective.
Yep.
So...
So I guess, I originally misunderstood your question. So the colleges don't really care how big our graduating class is.
Right.
Right. But for what we can do for our students, the smaller is better.
Right.
And it is definitely one of the things that parents are looking for. You know, one of the pieces of information that colleges will always say is the staff-to-student ratio or teacher-to-student ratio. And for us, you know, that's very advantageous for our smaller school. I think within a smaller school setting, especially the way that we do education at Chapag, you can really involve the learner in ways that you can't in a larger school, just partly by airtime, but also by engagement, by corrective engagement, or by, you know, continuing that conversation in the classroom where when you have 32 kids in a class, you just can't do, you can't get to everyone. Whereas when you have 15, you really can. I think the other piece for us is because we're smaller, we engender leadership in our students. We almost demand it because we need our students to be leaders. They have to be involved. They have to rise to that challenge. And, you know, we're trying in many ways to get them to see where they can flourish. So I would say that smaller is better for where we're at now.
Yes, do you get better, in other words, you feel you get, the staff feels it gets better results out of the student body rather than, I would presume the larger the group, the more difficult it is to some degree.
For sure. And I think, you know, when we go back to the AP stat, you know, at my last school, we had 300 kids in a grade, right? 300 kids in a grade, you can't offer the AP to everyone. You just can't. You don't have the staff resources. You know, at our school, we can, and we can do so in a way that we can support those students so they get that college experience and learn what it's going to take to be successful in an AP program, where a lot of the kids at my last school couldn't gain entrance to AP because there just weren't seats. So everything was built up to try and keep the kids out, where you had just the top 10 percent of kids really getting that experience.
So after a number of years of teaching here, and we have a lot of teachers here today and administrators, I would imagine it would be obvious if you did an analysis that there is a, there is a number at which you get better results, from my perspective anyway. And we have hired that new person, correct? Who was the person we hired to do public relations for us? Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe that's an area we should have him take a look at. Because even though people always bring up the voluminous nature of students or the lack of it, maybe we'd be better off selling a smaller product than a larger product, a smaller environment than a larger environment.
I think the, I think this is a good subject for the board's retreat coming up in October. Doug has some other things he wants to talk to us about, but this is probably another topic. Am I picking, Michelle? I was going to let Todd host choice.
Does that tell you?
I just wanted to make sure that we're not confusing classroom size with class size because having a daughter that graduated with that class, there were years where the fact that their, their overall class being so small made scheduling challenging. There were, you know, things that were offered in only one section, whereas in other classes, they were able to have two sections of certain things. So that meant some of our kids couldn't take things or had to rearrange. So I think we don't want to confuse a small classroom, you know, having 15 students in a class versus, you know, having a whole class of 49 because it did present a few scheduling challenges.
Yeah, and I would agree, you know, and I look at those two schools in comparison, I would definitely say that the larger school had other challenges that we don't have that make it more difficult to offer that top-tier experience to more school, the more students. So at a smaller school, you can do that, whereas at a larger school, really, you're catering to that top 10, 15 percent where the other students are excluded because of other reasons. It's more of a volume issue. So here, I think, you know, I look at the experience at Chapag in comparison to my last school, and I look at Chapag as being able to give that rich experience to a much wider range of our kids.
On the other hand, another strength of the small size would be if we look at that $100,000 in scholarships. I mean, certainly a lot of that is due to the students themselves and the efforts they put in. But to give credit where credit is due, a lot is due to your staff at the high school because I found that for my daughter, the communication, the constant communication, I'm sure from the kid's perspective is maybe was too much sometimes, but they need that because they have so many other things going on that I think that benefited so many of them to have that personalized attention, to remind them of the scholarship opportunities that were out there. I don't think anyone could ever graduate from Chapag and say, "I didn't even know that there was money available." They really had a lot of individualized attention when it came to navigating the scholarship process. That was wonderful.
Thank you, Mike. And we do, you know, really work hard at that. And I think, you know, we've, we just continually try and improve. You know, this last year, we did pizza, cookies, and cash, which was an after-school event. And I think for some of the kids, it was the pizza, some of the kids, it was the cookies, and a few of them, it was the cash. But they all came and we had a great turnout. It was, you know, right after school, before practices. I think we had 22 of the 49 kids show up, the ones that were maybe late to the gate, some of the kids that already gotten scholarship stuff in, but we sat them down, helped them with their applications right here in the library. And it was really a great event. And it's, for me, it's been sort of a personal mission because over the years, we watch seniors leave here or get to the spring, and all this money's still on the table. And our goal is to make sure that money is not left on the table. People have worked hard, they want to see kids go on, and a lot of it is merit-based and the kids have already done all the work. They just need to fill out the form. And I know that they get tired of that after doing all the applications and everything else, but that has been one of our real goals the last few years, is to connect them with the money that can make a difference in their lives.
I just had a question and a comment. The question is, on the schools listed, I see there's a few schools listed under different categories, like for example, UConn is competitive and then unrated. Is that because of different campus locations or different schools within the university?
Correct. That would be the, they don't call them branch, they call them regional campuses now, but that would be the regional campuses. The UConn itself is listed under, I think it's...
And University of Hartford, too, I think.
Yeah, and again, you know, we're going off of, we're trying to standardize it, so I'm not making anything up. We're going off of what U.S. News and World Report rates them as. You know, there's a variety of different rating agencies out there. U.S. News and World Report is pretty well-renowned, people know of that, but each of them have their own methodology.
Got it. And I just wanted to add a comment, and this may have gone around the horn and I just missed it because I don't always catch everything, but a woman in Bridgewater who passed away has left her entire estate to the Bridgewater Scholarship Committee. So they'll be getting a nice infusion of cash soon. And also, the scholarship group in Bridgewater has started a mentoring program where they're connecting students with community experts.
Excellent.
And then I'm sure everyone saw that the PTO got $15,000 from an anonymous donor to help with the tuition-in program.
Great.
So a lot of good stuff going on.
Keepin' comin'.
You know, I'm always focused on this because as I say, you know, for the people in the community who are, who have the most cursory understanding of Chapag, this is the bright and shiny light that they actually pay attention to and will, will be able to tout and show respect for our students' accomplishments as the college acceptances. And they get better every year, so it's really great to see. I just want to ask, I think you might be missing one, there was an acceptance to Wesleyan, too.
There was. I did catch that.
So we want to make sure, when this goes down in posterity, and when Doug starts handing this out at every cocktail party he goes to, that we have that on there.
Yeah, that goes under most selective. Wesleyan's 18 percent acceptance rate. It was a late acceptance, so that student was waitlisted. It was like right after school came, got out that it went on. So this was a, I pulled the wrong list. It wasn't the updated list. Yeah, no, I did in looking, but you guys already had the packets. And I think, you know, for us, I would like to highlight, and we started tracking the honors programs. We started a little bit about that last year because many of our students not only get a, gain acceptances, but they gain acceptance to honors programs within the colleges. And so, for example, with Columbia, you know, our young man that was accepted there was actually accepted to the honors program within Columbia, which is even more exclusive. You know, Columbia by itself is a 6 percent acceptance rate. The honors program doesn't really have stats, but it's even more exclusive. And that happens with UConn, it happens with many of the other colleges. So our students may choose those schools also because the honors program, and maybe not as a selective school, often comes with tuition or other nice scholarships. And so that is one of the things we started tracking because I think it would be interesting to you when we report out to here, you know, not only are students getting here, but these honors programs as well, and maybe some of the merit-based aid that comes along with it, so.
Speaking of tracking, you mentioned the 11 students that got an AP scholar designation, which I think is wonderful.
Yep.
And I'm wondering if you're comparing that to past years, if you've seen an uptick in the numbers?
This is the highest that I've seen. I couldn't give you off the top of my head our breakdown over the years, but I think this is the most, we've had AP scholars over the years, but I don't know that we've had 11 before.
That's extraordinary, especially considering the size of the class.
Yeah, and definitely three, if you see the breakdown, the three that received the highest level of recognition. I mean, really, they're going in with their freshman year complete. If the college accepts the credit or puts it onto the general rolls, and I think Anthony brought this up either last year or a couple of years ago, that not only does it bring students maybe to a year in advance, but by having those credits on their rolls, they are, get premier scheduling opportunities, which really can be a game changer, so.
I did, and it does. It's, it's something you don't realize until, you know, you have children going through the system and you get reacquainted to some of these little details.
Right.
That even, even a child finishing a semester earlier is a scholarship of it in itself. And depending upon the school, that's pretty significant.
Or on time.
There's a lot of benefits to come with it.
You know, we look at, we look at the college graduation rates and they, they only will publish a six-year rate because the four-year rates are so bad. I mean, the four-year graduation rates are terrible. So for a kid to go in and be able to graduate within the four years, which is what the family was planning on, the student was planning on, that's good news. And anything that we can do to help them through that process, or as Anthony said earlier, you know, if they can even come out a semester earlier or a year earlier, you know, or go into their masters or do whatever they're going to do next, amazing. Right?
Todd, is the AP, the number of AP scholars that we have this year, I got to imagine there's some correlation to the policy change that the board and the district made a year or so ago by requiring testing?
I believe, you know, yes. So by, we would have for years, kids that I really felt should have taken the AP exam and for one reason or another, didn't take it. So that policy change, I think, is a direct reflection on how many students now are being recognized because they're all taking the AP test. I think that that's a dual win for us as a school because I really do believe preparing for that AP exam is a good experience for kids because they're going to prep for that experience that they're going to have at college. Plus, many of them will receive credit or some other type of accolade at their colleges, whether it's generalized credit, whether it's credit toward their graduation, or as Anthony had said, toward preferential scheduling. So it's really a win-win.
I don't want to correct myself. I think I just said that the board, it wasn't the board's action that did that, that was Pat and her team that did that. I want to be clear about where that came from.
Yeah. Kudos.
Michelle?
I was just, I just had a question about the AP scholars as well. Are those classes only taken in their senior year?
So the statistics I gave you today were the classes from the senior year. The overall is how many they would have done during the time that they were there. So that... So that is a cumulative listing. So, so is it two?
What you gave us is just the senior, but was...
Correct. I don't give, I didn't give you the juniors. There's actually more juniors that were in this listing as well for AP Scholars.
No, I was just wondering if a student took some AP as a junior and some as a senior. It's not in there. Okay. I was just wondering. Thank you.
Yep. So this was focused on seniors.
Okay.
If I can, one last question. The rankings, does U.S. News and World Report or any of the, differentiate perhaps not by campus location, but by colleges, like within the university, like the School of Engineering, the School of Business, et cetera?
It does not, as far as I could tell. And, you know, that's sort of one of the next levels that we're looking at, is looking both at the honors programs, but is it within the college itself, one of the programs that's more exclusive? Because some of the schools are much harder to get into within the university, you know, to get into that major.
Right.
In particular. Yep. So that breakdown could be another level of specificity that we would pass along. For sure.
Any other questions? Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is an executive session in which I'd like to invite the superintendent and the region's attorney, Gary Breschew, into. May I have a motion?
Move to go into executive session for discussion of pending litigation. Oh, hang on.
Thank you.
Move to go into executive session for the purpose of the discussion of pending litigation, John Doe versus Region 12 BoE.
Second? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved unanimously. We're now into an executive session.
Okay, great.